Hi, I'm Robin Schulz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Good evening and welcome to the Magic City City Council where the light of the church is joined by the again as we always do. I'll be ordered and asked to
Council President Leiter. Council Pro Tem Lacy. Council Member Sweeney. Council Member Driver.
Here.
Council Member Murphy.
Present.
Council Member Middleburgs.
Here.
Council Member McClain.
Here.
We will proceed. If everyone please rise, we will have the indication by our first and the place led by
Go by your heads. To the heavenly Father and Mother, be reminded of your grace and love. Amen. Our thoughts align with your word and our actions glorify you. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to my United States of America and to your republic, which was changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor has some special recognitions, including a couple of proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. I will first call up our group from the Hoover Area Chamber for Small Business Week. Nan Baldwin, who is our Hoover Area Chamber President. Kimberly Jackson, our board chair, 2025 Board Chair. Rowan Porbandawala is the immediate past Board Chair. Jonathan Carter, second vice, Vivian Moore, Greg Knighton, and James Robinson, Calhoun Police. Those who front, we sure would like to read this proclamation in honor of Small Business Week.
Whereas for more than 60 years, the National Small Business Week has honored the risk takers, innovators, and job creators who are the backbone of the American economy. We proudly recognize the small business owners who fuel prosperity, growth, and opportunity in communities across the country. Whereas the city of Hoover, Alabama celebrates our local small businesses and the vital contributions they make to our economy, quality life, and community spirit. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of our community, providing essential goods and services, creating jobs, fostering innovation, creativity, and entrepreneurial leadership. Whereas the Small Business Administration continues to empower entrepreneurs across America, serving as the leading voice for small businesses within the federal government and providing vital resources for starting, growing, and sustaining businesses. Whereas small businesses employ nearly half of America's workforce, contribute 43.45% to the nation's GDP, and are integral partners in the broader economic ecosystem alongside larger businesses. Whereas in 2023, Jefferson County led the state of Alabama. There are 12,124 new business applications highlighting the spirit of entrepreneurship and growth in our region. Whereas the city of Hoover proudly supports entrepreneurs, innovators, and small business owners who create jobs, drive economic growth, and enrich the social fabric of our community. Now therefore, we bring V. B. R. K. B. Mayor and John B. Leiter, City Council President, on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, to hereby declare May 4th through 10th as Small Business Week throughout the entire year.
Yes, sir.
Andy Tatum and Missy Peter. They're part of our chamber staff.
Bring them up.
Can we either, one of you go on, how does that click?
I can't hold me anymore.
One, two, three, one, two, three, hold it, one, two. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Pato. And city council members, on behalf of the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce, our board of directors, and our nearly 1,000 member businesses, thank you for recognizing National Small Business Week and making Hoover a part of that celebration. Most of our members are small businesses, as you're aware. They are truly the backbone of Hoover's economy. And we're proud to champion them and provide opportunities for them to grow and succeed through networking, education, promotions, and advocacy. And we're grateful to the city of Hoover for supporting and celebrating their impact. I want to thank you for this proclamation and thank you for your continued partnership. And I would like to bring up now our board chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. That's Mayor B. R. Kato and the President Leiter and the other city council members. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. Again, like Nan said, I am the board chair for 2025. Along with my fellow board members, we thank you for supporting small businesses. And as Nan says, small businesses are indeed the backbone of local communities, and they make the economy work. So we are thrilled to be here to celebrate Small Business Week. As an employee of Alabama Power Company, I see firsthand the resilience and innovation of small business owners. They're owned by our neighbors, they create local jobs, support our schools, and help to make our city stronger. Working together with the chamber through public-private partnerships and collaborations, we are building a community where small businesses can thrive. We thank you again for this proclamation. Have a great evening. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Now, we would like to invite out Ms. Emmett Terry, who is Miss Hoover. And we are going to have a proclamation that's near and dear to her heart, and that is ALS Awareness Month. So you just like.
Whereas amyotrophic sclerosis, or ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive neurodegenerative disease that affects nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord, ultimately leading to total paralysis while cognitive function often remains intact. Whereas more than 30,000 Americans live with ALS at any given time, with approximately 5,000 new diagnoses made each year, including veterans who are twice as likely to develop the disease. And whereas ALS has no known cause or cure, and most people with ALS live only two to five years after diagnosis. Whereas the financial and emotional toll on families is profound, with the cost of care often exceeding $250,000 annually and requiring full-time caregiving. Whereas local advocacy efforts, such as stopping out ALS one step at a time, founded by Ms. Hoover 2025, Emmett Terry, play a vital role in raising awareness, supporting families, and advancing legislative and research efforts. Whereas partnerships with leading institutions such as Duke University and the ALS Therapy Development Institute are fostering innovative clinical trials and expanding patient assistance programs. And whereas increased public understanding and national commitment are essential to accelerate the discovery of treatments and ultimately of cure for ALS. Now therefore, we bring V. B. R. Kato, Mayor, and John B. Leiter, City Council President, on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, to hereby declare May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month in Hoover, Alabama, and encourage all citizens to support this cause that deeply affects families across our community and country.
Okay, I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep it brief. But thank you all so much. You have no idea how much this means to me. So some of you are familiar with my personal story and personal connection to ALS, but my grandfather had ALS and passed away this time last year. So it is truly very close to my heart because I grew up helping take care of him. I quite literally changed diapers, changed his clothes, helped bathe him when he was bedridden. I mean, there are so many aspects of taking care of someone who can't take care of themselves that you just don't consider. And I think it's super important to bring awareness, not just to the disease itself, but to the effects of it on the person who has the disease and the entire family. So May being ALS Awareness Month is super important because awareness creates momentum behind the movement to support a community and to help find a cure for a disease that is quite literally a death sentence. It has no cure, only a handful of treatments. So thank you so much for supporting me as Ms. Hoover, supporting my nonprofit organization, stopping out ALS one step at a time. And I have a little something special that I would like to do for the month of May to celebrate May being ALS. We're in this month. So I'm going to just shout out a couple of our friends in the room tonight. First up, Chief Bentley, could you please stand? Please, don't worry, you're not going to be the only one. Okay? The mayor's already standing. He's behind me. All of our city council members, would you mind standing? I promise this is not going to be bad. It's going to be so much fun. Chief Durzes, would you stand? Chief Fountain, would you stand? Thank you. Okay, first of all, round of applause for all the work that this amazing group of people does for our community. And I'm also nominating you to do the Ice Bucket Challenge this month. So you have been called out. Please help me just support the ALS community. So the impact of a social media challenge, like the Ice Bucket Challenge, it raised millions of dollars, $115 million 10 years ago when the Ice Bucket Challenge started. So it just encourages people to support the cause. It brings awareness to the cause. So thank you for standing. Thank you for being a good sport, and you've been nominated to the Ice Bucket Challenge for May as ALS Awareness Month in the city of Hoover. Thank you all so much.
We also have a very special employee recognition. Some of you may have seen in the news that in the last two weeks, our own Chief Clay Bentley has been named the Jefferson State Community College 2025 Outstanding Alumni Award. Chief Bentley, congratulations to you. Well, now move to our consent agenda. Items four and five will be pulled off the consent agenda and move to our next meeting agenda. Mr. President, if you will read items one through nine, with exception of the fourth and five.
Item number one approves the payment of bills. Item two is the approval of minutes from the April 17, 2025 work session and the April 28, 2025 special meeting. Item three, resolution 845025 approves a 050 retail beer off premises unlinked alcohol license and 070 retail takeaway off premises unlinked alcohol license for Ken &amp; Brew LLC doing businesses. Tobacco Plus 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 located at 1845 Mike Memory Highway Suite 209 Hoover, Alabama. Item number six, resolution 845325 authorizes Mayor B. R. Kato to execute and accept a grant from the Alabama Forest Street Commission for the Trees for Alabama program in the amount of $100,000. Authorizes Mayor B. R. Kato to execute any necessary documents. To accept that grant, this resolution further amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025. To reflect the acceptance of this grant and authorize the related expenditures, resolution 845225 amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, as shown on the exhibit attached to the resolution. Item number eight, resolution number 845625 authorizes the execution of an employment services agreement with Melissa Woods following the completion of her provisional deployment term at a rate of $85 per hour and shall not exceed the employment limits set by the employees' retirement system of Alabama. Item number nine, resolution 845725 authorizes Mayor B. R. Kato to execute a memorandum of understanding and intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama for the provision of equipment and services in connection with the 2025 SEC baseball term.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second for approval to consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay. The ayes have it. The motion is clear. Now move to our regular agenda, beginning the first reading for item number 10, resolution number 8447-25.
This resolution grants conditional use approval with conditions shown in exhibit two to the resolution for an artisanal beer wine bar for property located at 3601 Market Street, Suite 101 Hoover, Alabama. A public hearing is scheduled for May 19th, 2025. Item number 11, resolution 844825 grants conditional use approval with conditions shown in exhibit two to the resolution for sale, service, and rental golf carts, as well as the option for temporary outdoor car displays for property located at 508 Mineral Trace, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing scheduled for May 19th, 2025. Finally, resolution 836525 grants conditional use approval with conditions shown in exhibit two to the resolution for the change in classification from day care to group home care, group care home for the property located at 3599 Beerfield Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing scheduled for May 19th, 2025.
Very good. That brings us to the end of our first readings and our regular agenda. Open it up in the comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, everyone, for your prayers as my daughter went through surgery two weeks back. Just want to give some numbers here. City response time for EMS in fire departments typically can be seven minutes. Response time for rural areas can be 30. Can be 30 to 40. Yeah, can be 30 to 45 minutes. Friday, April 25th, 3:55.
I think what Mr. Murphy is conveying is we are incredibly blessed and fortunate to live in the city of Hoover, where response times for our public safety is under five minutes. And that comes as a result of leadership's commitment to that, our respective chiefs and their command staff, and then in that backup department. So on behalf of Mr. Murphy, I want to acknowledge that, and I think everyone can agree how fortunate we are to live in a city that does that. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And Miss Moore, I'm sorry, I didn't call you. If the phones aren't answered, the other things don't fall online. Thank you, ma'am.
We all fit together.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Also comments, let's just stand. I'm sorry.
J. Smith, Magnolia Run. I was just going to ask real quick, on the truing up of the budget, was that the final true-up for last year's budget? And I was just wondering, what were the, the 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 unprojected, I guess, funds left over after all the expenses were budgeted and everything?
That's in the presentation.
I did not hear that on Thursday.
Is that presentation online?
That was, yes, that was not Thursday's presentation that was done last week.
Is that online?
Yes, should be.
Ms. Smith, we'll get you a link to that.
Okay.
That is, this was a little over 10 million.
Okay.
How much is your average?
Close to average for back in the early days.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
KT Thomas, Scout Creek. Ordinances are the local laws of the city of Hoover. They are adopted by the Hoover City Council and may only be modified by the council. This is both an honor and a responsibility. You determine the laws that affect people. I have questions best suited for the only group who can modify local laws. December 9th, 2019, Planning and Zoning approved a document titled Municipal Code, City of Hoover. Not the council, but Planning and Zoning approved a document. This document is on the website where it says, "The latest revision to Hoover Stormwater Management Ordinance." This alleged ordinance is not code. It has not been approved by the council, and it's never been in the MUNI code. This body never approved it. Please think about this for a moment. It says it's an ordinance. It's presented as a law. It's used as a law, but it's not. And you're the only body who fixed that or maybe should be concerned. Hoover has a zoning ordinance. It was Appendix 1 of MUNI code. December 21, 2020, you all voted to remove that from MUNI code and make it a zoning ordinance. This was approved by the council, as have been all of the amendments to the zoning council, the zoning ordinance since then. No problem. It's good. In 1989, the Hoover City Council passed an ordinance, 89857, which became Appendix 2 in the MUNI code. Those were the subdivision regulations. Appendix 2 and Appendix 1 at that time were completely different content. When the material was moved to the zoning ordinance and Appendix 2 remained, it was still completely different content. They covered different things. On March 21 of '25, just over a month ago, Appendix 2 subdivision regulations were deleted from MUNI code. I'm sure you can remember that a month ago, you did not approve an ordinance to remove that from MUNI code. You are the authority. No one else. You adopt the laws to protect the city. You protect the residents with those laws. Nobody else does that. And yet, a document titled Stormwater Management Ordinance is parading around as though it is a law that you passed. And yet, subdivision regulations, laws that were approved by your predecessors, were removed from MUNI code without your approval. I seek answers. Please question everything.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Bannister?
Thank you, John. David Bannister, 1917, Stevens Street. Derek, you were obviously talking about gratitude a minute ago, and I want to echo that. I'm up here tonight to deliver some kindness and give my own piece of gratitude. We just were the charity of record for the Magic City Wine Fest. And for those of you that were there, after the rain subsided, it was a, it was a huge success. It's an event that we got from the city of Birmingham, and we were lucky enough when they brought it to Hoover to name a Hoover charity, the Charity of Record, and that was Hoover Neighborhood Bridges. And I want to thank some people because, you know, whether you've lived in a city 30 years or you've lived in it 30 days, if you don't know the nuances of getting things up and running in an event, you lean on city leaders. And tonight, Erin Cobal's here, and I'd like to thank her individually. And I know there's a lot of people to thank, as well as Kelly Peoples, as well as Wendy Dickerson, who basically held my hand and walked me through 100 mistakes that we made and cut red tape when red tape needed to be cut. And just kindness cuts a lot of things. And I got to tell you, I've known Erin for 25 years when we went back to the Seven on Seven events in the early 2000s. And her tireless dedication and work to making Hoover a destination for events like this hasn't wavered. And while I know she probably gets her fair share of compliments and commendations, I'm here tonight to give her a shirt from Neighborhood Bridges as part of the kindness. She asked me twice not to recognize her tonight, so that tells you a little bit more about her. Kelly Peoples, of course, is helping prepare for the Marriage Pair Breakfast tomorrow, another big event, so she's not here tonight. Wendy, I know you're over there hiding behind the monitors, doing the tireless work that you always do, but you saved us and I heart a tremendous amount of headache. Mayor B. R. Kato, I'd like to thank you for making and fast-tracking this charity almost six years ago, taking us to Montgomery and putting us on track and using city services when other cities hadn't done it. And now there's 34 cities in Alabama that are mirroring us. I want to thank you. Chief Durzes for making some calls and making some things happen in Montgomery because we didn't know how the ABC board works, and we sure do now. But there's so many people to thank, but the last thing I want to add to this before I give a few people shirts tonight, and there's a lot of people in this room that deserve shirts that probably won't get them tonight. But I want to remind people that great things happen when people are willing to do the extras. It says infinite possibilities up there, but I've always known Hoover as a get-it-done community and a get-it-done body of people. And Erin, you and your staff and everybody sure did get it done because we had a fabulous event this weekend, and it doesn't happen unless you do it.
Thank you very much. We'll see you. Thank you.
Mayor B. R. Kato, President Leiter, members of council. My name is Johnny Norris. I'm a resident of Hoover. I live at 207 Russell Woods Drive in the Russell Woods community. I'm here tonight to tell you a story on a subject matter that I'm sure the council's heard a lot about, which has to do with the stormwater runoff problems that we have in our community. To give you a little bit of background, a few years ago, we were having problems at our house relating to stormwater that was coming off of the driveway from the culvert right in front of my house, coming into our garage and our den and flooding it. And my wife, Missy, who's sitting right here, came to the council and asked for some help about that. Mayor B. R. Kato suggested that somebody did a talk to her and figure out something to do to help us because we're having flooding. City Attorney Corley, however, told my wife and others that the city really can't do anything under a particular constitutional provision of the 1901 Alabama Constitution unless we file a lawsuit. And I'm, by the way, I'm a lawyer. I've been doing it for about 35 years. I know several of your partners, City Attorney Corley. But on Saturday night, we suffered a catastrophic flooding in the back of our house based on a stormwater pipe that just collapsed. Previous to that, about a month ago, there were four trees lining my fence right where the pipe is. It's a giant pipe. And when it collapsed, within the space of about four days, all four of the trees just fell down like tin pins. But then we had the stormwater event of Saturday, and we now realize that it's going to flood my pool. It's going to destroy my foundation. And so I asked the council, what, you know, when you're dealing with someone like me, what do you want to do about it? I mean, do you want to authorize it and say, "Let's go out there and help this gentleman"? Or are we going to rely on City Attorney Corley's excellent analysis that he put out in the 2020 fall edition of the municipal league journal about the legal strategy behind avoiding the city's liability for such a thing? Because it's part of an easement that was never dedicated to the city. And, and there's a constitutional prohibition from helping a resident when it's only going to help that resident and not help the public at large. And I understand that. And Mr. Corley is an excellent lawyer, and this is good legal advice for a council that's seeking to evade responsibility. But I submit to you that from a political and public policy standpoint, that's not the way to go. I don't think that this council ought to be signing off on a policy of, "Well, if your house is being flooded, you know what? You can pay for it." But if you do, go and hire a lawyer, which by the way, is not easy. But if you do, go and hire a lawyer, which by the way, is not easy to do, because there's a $100,000 cap on damages from municipal organizations like this one. Most lawyers won't take the case. Most lawyers don't have a lawyer like me sitting in the house.
Mr. Norris, we have a three-minute timeline. We will be happy to talk to you after the meeting, if you can stick around.
I will. Thank you.
Mr. Brooklyn. I really wanted to ask a question, if there was a simple way to do this, but is there to get a breakdown of what's included in the payment of bills? And I'll tell you where I'm coming from, is with things like daylight, sunshine, and transparency, you either believe in them or you don't. And repeatedly, there's expenditures of public funds that have no detail, that you can't find out anything about, for various items, doesn't tell anybody what's happening with their money. Mayor, it's your administration, and Mr. Lyta, I've spoken to enough city employees to, no, you don't encourage the releasing of these documents either, and, you know, it ends up invading everything. I have been waiting for you to file your campaign disclosure law as required by state campaign law. You have, I think it's over $63,000 that has never been accounted for. I mean, I have to assume you're not using it for European trips and everything, but we don't know. You just ignore the law. And where all this comes together is, I finally got a response to my public document request, I guess you could call it a response. I asked for basically the information, on any information related to the expenditures on the CON project, something that the city had negotiated and agreed, the cost of which would be borne by the developer, and this council voted and approved. Those were your rules that you ignored. And I got some copies of the minutes from health care authority meetings, and I guess it's a breakdown of about $840,000 of legal fees, which I think we're spending properly. Mr. Corley, I have to keep the focus on you, but I assume you oversaw some of this, and it might have, understand that this is all the information related to the things I requested about that the city has? There's never been an email, there's never been a meeting, there's no notes. You know, originally, I wanted to try and find out for myself whether or not there was the need for a taxpayer's lawsuit to recover public funds. Instead of finding out the reasons not for that, I think what I'm finding out is to get any financial information out of this city, it's going to require a court order. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
I need a motion for council members to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing with their attorney issues related to a real estate transaction. The city's attorney has given our clerk, Ms. Dickerson, a written clarification and certification as required by law for executive session involving real estate transactions. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I approve. We go into executive session.
Sir. I have a motion and a second. My clerk, please call them.
Counselor Prezy?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Counselor McGlynn?
Aye.
Counselor Lyta?
Aye.
With a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the motion carries, and we will go into executive session. The meeting will not return to the chambers following the executive session, we will adjourn properly at the conclusion of the executive session. Thank you, your attorneys.